It's seven o'clock. I've been staring at the screen. First of all, thank you Jen for hosting us and everybody from Tinmouth, welcome. And thanks for whoever set this up. Looks great. Okay, please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Rich, and second?
Second.
Ned? Okay. I'd like to just add after, we're gonna have public input, so you guys are all gonna have a chance to give us public input. And then we'll have a little bit of discussion, but I'm going to add after-board discussion, Tinmouth building concerns. So if that's okay?
Mm-hmm.
Approval of the agenda with that addition? All in favor? Okay. Thank you. All right. Public input would, is there a sign up? What are we doing here for public input? You wanna just raise your hands or anybody from the public? Go Doug.
I already talked a lot, so.
Yeah, why not?
Well, now it's official.
So I'm Doug Fontaine. I've lived in Tinmouth for a long time. I was on the school board actually for about 15 years. Previous supervisory union. So as a builder, I'm concerned that there is a lot of deferred maintenance on the building here. And I don't know if all of you are aware, but it's this kind of unique situation here. The town of Tinmouth owns both this community center building and the connector and the school building. Supervisory union in lieu of rent is responsible for maintenance and certain construction aspects, you know. So, and my concern is that that maintenance is not being done or not being done well. Witness the ruse over the compressors for the heat pumps that were kittywampus. That's a technical term. So, and I, there are several items that we went around. Should I itemize those again? Should I go through those again?
Why don't you wait till we do the concerns, because we might have some feedback on some of them, if you don't mind doing that?
Okay.
Does that work? Does anybody have a concern about that?
Was there anything that wasn't on the, the letters that we, that the select board and community center group, was there anything when you guys were out there that he talked about that isn't on those lists?
I never saw that list.
Oh, okay.
It's in the letter.
It's in the letter.
I think it's items on the flyer.
Yeah. Because we have documentation, like written documentation out, which was roof, HVAC ceilings.
Okay. My larger concern is the lack of communication between the director of the fiscal plan for the supervisory union and specifically the town of Tinmouth, but in general, I think there's poor communication there. He doesn't return phone calls, for example. So, and you know, he may be too busy, but you know, it needs to happen. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yeah, can you just say your name?
Judy Bellmore, House Select Board member and longtime resident of Tinmouth. I would just like to thank you guys for coming early to walk around our school building and our community center. And I also ask that you please honor the agreement that you made with the town of Tinmouth in maintaining these buildings. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? For the good of the order? Okay. Does the board want to respond, or do we want to go right to?
We can just go to the agenda.
Okay. So we're gonna go to the agenda item. So, all right. Who would like to begin? Cheryl, would you like to talk a little bit about what we do know and?
Yes. So after the meeting, you know, hold on. I guess we should get it on the record, what the concerns were. So Doug, I'm gonna.
I can read, I can read out the list that just, if we want to do that.
And what I can do, if you want Josh, is then tell you, because what I did is after receiving this, we went and I had a conversation to see where we are in these things. So, I don't know if you want me to respond?
I think maybe, I'll just, how about I, I'll just read the, the numbers and then we can go through it afterwards, just so that's clarity. So, just for clarity, so as a board, as the school board, before this meeting, we walked around the building to look at some of the complaints. Previous, a few weeks ago, the select board, myself, Jen, and some other community members walked around based on some continuing complaints that had been occurring over time and, and not being addressed. And so at that, at a select board meeting, they then sent us a letter. The letter pointed out a few, six specific things. One being the exterior wall area above the kitchen roof needs immediate attention to address the water and rod issues. Shingles at the ridge line over the back hallway for the community center of the school had, are, they're lifted and heaving. There's other sections of the clapboards that need repairing. There was some grapevine right behind this building here that hadn't been maintained. Repairs to the handicap ramp, which is the way that we access this side of the building and the only handicap access into the school. And repairs to handicap bridge to the playground. So those were the main six points that were discussed.
Josh, I think you forgot the.
Oh, right. Yes, yeah, I must have missed, yeah. And so, yeah, I must have just skipped it, because my reading comprehension.
But that letter was specific to the community center.
Oh, right. That was the community center one, I apologize. The other, yeah, there was another one that's just a paragraph that didn't break down. I apologize for that. So that was the community center board letter. And then in the select board is, was rotted siding, peeling paint, missing stucco, unsightly and dangerous covers over the heat pumps. One even dumps water into a window. There is also a concern of lack of communication from the facilities manager. There have been several system upgrades listed with no prior consultation or advance notice to the town or the select board. So I think that, just nodding, does that feel like that was the general consensus? Okay, so that was good. I think that was all the points. And I think we, yeah.
Josh, we walked down earlier, the trees along the side were pointed out by some people here.
Well, I wasn't part of that conversation. So what was the, what was the concern with it?
Trees along the.
Saplings?
Saplings, yeah.
That they weren't being maintained correctly?
Cut or something?
There's a tree between the shed and the building.
Oh, okay. Yes, gotcha.
Something's gonna give eventually.
Yeah.
That is listed, I believe, number four.
Yeah.
Can I just ask a question? It says, this is in the, from the select board. It says, "There have been several system upgrades with no prior consultation or advance notice to the town/select board." So those upgrades just occurred?
Well, they occurred, so most of the, so just for, the, the heat pump HVAC is through HESER grants.
Okay.
That we went through the buildings and grounds process. So they were talked about in school board meetings, but not necessarily, besides outside of someone paying attention to those meetings, they wouldn't have, and talk, and, and at some select board meetings. We redid the tiling floor here over the summer. One of the communications that did not occur was that these bathrooms in the community center were offline and our community center organizer was not made aware of that. And so they could, and it happened on Tinmouth Town Day where we came in and those toilets were not in service and no one knew that they were out of service until the day that it was, that was happening. And so there is a, the, the difference between this building, specifically this part of this building, is when school is not in session, the town uses this building. We have an organizer who rents out the space. There's events that happen pretty much every weeknight here. And so there needs to be good, so if we don't have good communication about upgrades, like one of the other things that, the floor being refinished here is gonna happen in this gym. So before that actually occurs, it, the time and, and period of time that this floor will be out of service has to be communicated and has to be in a dialogue, because if there's already a, if there's already rented out time, if there, if there's not enough information given ahead of time, we now have a rented out space that cannot be used. So that would be one of the, of, one of the communication problems that's occurring.
Right. And I guess that's what I was trying to get at, is, you know, it says with no prior consultation or advance notice. So there, there, there is a lack of communication.
Yes.
Between the head of Buildings and Grounds and here.
Yeah.
Okay. That's all. I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, yeah. Right. And those are the, I think those are the specific examples that I've been aware of or participated in. And I don't know if that, if there's, there might be other times where that happens and it might be occurring at other schools, but there's different relationships with that those times.
All right.
Cheryl, okay.
You can, yeah.
The floor I checked on today, Trish is aware, it will be happening the week between Christmas and New Year's.
This floor.
This floor, right here. And that, that, she said that that timeframe is fine. So that, that's been set up for that. I did ask about some of the other issues. So one and three, the exterior, exterior area above the kitchen and three, the clapboard. There is scheduled with the contractor this Saturday that he's going to come out. There will be an MRU USD employee and someone who can do the work. So that's being addressed. The second one, on the ridge line, that, we finally got a date, the 22nd, that's been scheduled. I want to say that they've been notified. I'm like, nine, yes. Jen shaking her head, yes. Good. You were notified, right. Because that will occur during the school day. So that shouldn't impact. Where do we go? Number four, the grapevine, that is something he said they will address right away. Like, we're gonna get that. Someone will come in and clip it. The repairs to the handicap, handicap ramp and the bridge were things that have not been addressed yet. And that is something he, when I spoke to him, he said, because it needs to be ADA compliant, we need to make sure that we follow a certain protocol. So we want to make sure that we follow, to make sure that it's ADA compliant. With that said, I did hear, as I came in today, we had a very generous offer from a community member. And that would be up to you guys, if you wish to, you know, pursue that. It would probably happen more quickly, right? So.
Can we just clarify that? I think Doug was talking about the bridge. I don't know.
Oh, correct. You're right. Just the bridge, yep.
Command out here.
Yes, thank you for that. So that's the update that I have. I will say that since I've been on here since July, I have met with both Gail and Trish and we, we did talk about communication, and Jen was in the meeting as well. It is something that we are working on and I do think we will get better. So.
Okay.
And looking at the rotted clapboards along the kitchen roof, it would seem to me that if you just put clapboards back up there again, they're gonna rot. And so, most places where snow builds up like that, there's flashing. And I would think, I'm not a builder, but I would think one would, we might want to consider putting flashing back in there instead of clapboards so that it won't rot again. But that's above my grade to deal with that. But I think that's something you might want to consider.
As I said, he's meeting with someone on Saturday.
Who is meeting?
Either the Buildings and Grounds head or one of the custodial staff, the maintenance staff.
So would you?
It depends on the time when.
Would you pass that thought on?
I will, I will.
I'm not in any way instructing anybody to do anything. I'm just saying that's an alternative that might be better.
And I, I think, and I appreciate all the, the things that are occurring, what is, what my long-term concern is, is that it took, you know, select board, like we had to, it had to escalate to get to a point where it's like simple maintenance. And so, I know you're, you're new at your job too. And so it's like, there, but so, and now you're, you're, you know, you're seeing what happens. And so hopefully, taken from this is, let's try to make, because if stuff is happening here, I don't necessarily think it's a Tinmouth only problem where if there's communications breaking down and things like that. Because there's still, you know, there's still the issue of the, the roofs over the siding, which are, over the HVAC, which don't seem safe. And just the general maintenance of the clapboards that, where there's water, where there's, it needs to be repainted and it needs worked on. That wasn't necessarily specifically called out in one of those bullet points, but like, that's work that the other schools don't necessarily need to have because they're concrete or, you know, they have different finished structures. And it probably is a, you know, to redo it is, but one of the benefits of the Tinmouth schools, we don't have any con, we don't have asphalt anywhere. So, you know, we don't have to spend a ton of money on redoing.
On pavement.
On pavement. So it's like, our building itself might need a little bit more exterior work, but it's general, you know, like, we're not trying to say, oh, I'm nickel and, oh, we spent this much over there, so we should spend much, this much over here. But just of trying to figure out the bigger picture of, of how do we make sure we're maintaining all the schools and all the buildings in the way that they need to be maintained, I think. And so I think this is a great first step. And I, I hope that we can keep moving forward and that we can keep just having an easier relationship so that we don't have to, to do this as, as much. And hopefully, my hope would be, if it can improve here, that it'll improve everywhere. And everywhere we'll, we'll be able to get the things that they need.
Can I say something?
Yeah, go for it.
So Kevin Eaton, the select board chair and the assistant fire team, Tinmouth Fire Department. Our game supper is coming up November 22nd. Is that ramp something that could be addressed prior to that?
You looking to me for an answer?
Just something that needs to be done.
Yeah, I feel like, especially if we're the, for, and I'm not speaking on, as, you know, as, I don't know all the rules, but you can, you measure how high that curb is. You know what you can do for a public space, it's like one in 12 is the, like, there is a ADA rule that says, you know, this is the public space and if you need handrails, you need handrails. Like, that seems like, and then, you know. I just put in an ADA ramp at a house and it's an aluminum metal ramp and maybe that's, you know, it's like, it didn't cost a crazy, it's, it's a low enough number that I don't even know if we have to come to Buildings and Grounds for it. Like, you know, that kind of size of it. So if that is a possible solution, there, there's a relatively quick fix that could potentially be it. But that's.
So you're asking for the ramp coming in, not the bridge, correct?
The ramp.
Yeah.
Approaching the, yes.
And what was your date? November 20th?
The date of it is, the, November 22nd.
Okay. I will look into that. I won't make a promise that I don't know, but I will definitely, we will look into it.
All right. Miss everybody, we know where we're at and everybody's strapped in.
I'll just, I'll just add one thing.
Yeah, please.
As a member of the Buildings and Grounds Committee, I think we've had a lot of success in the past year and a half with our, what feels like our main charge, which is managing the, the surplus budget, the Buildings Sinking Fund, which is typically for large projects, heating systems and those sort of things. And as, as board members, we haven't spent time to focus on the other aspect of Buildings and Grounds, which is the maintenance side of things. So I think we're, we're in a good place to start considering what we can do as a board and on Buildings and Grounds to help support the more ongoing maintenance side, as opposed to the, the kind of large, you know, gym floors and those sort of things.
Look, that's a priority that's worth though. I mean, there's some things that are, I mean, this is all beyond cosmetic, I think, Josh has shown, but.
Right.
The ramp and, and ADA compliance, does this not open us up to larger issues and maybe ought to be top on our priority list, just so that we can avoid any situation where, yeah.
Non-compliance or, yep. Excuse me. Okay.
If I may.
Yeah, go ahead, Cam.
Just want to say, I really appreciate you all guys coming up here and looking around and putting it on your agenda and giving us some attention.
You're welcome.
My second, but Gail had to say, thank you all for your time and attention to the Tinmouth School and Community Center.
Thanks for the invite.
Yeah, for sure. And the tour. Okay. Moving on. Approval of the minutes? Ten, one.
So moved.
Second?
No, second.
Okay. Anybody have any? Go ahead, Lenny, thank you.
Board discussion of public comments, and I just have some questions. Number four, midway down, a member of the public speech stating that the wording in any contract should have specific language incorporating coaches and other playing fields.
Let me, I gotta find the line. I know what she was talking.
It's like the fifth, sixth line of item four. Particularly about the incorporating coaches.
I think it was the, the idea, so we're specific, the specific example is the field at Mill River.
Right.
So in the contract wording, what the public member was suggesting was that final wording should be reviewed by, like, coaching staff and by the ground supervisor, so that you, because right now, suppose, how the contract was written for that Mill River.
Right.
Field, it doesn't seem like it was actually completed properly, like, by the wording of the contract.
Right.
But what that person wanted to do was actually have, make sure that if we're doing contracts that, that affect the playing surface or that actually, the people that are using it are advised.
Are included.
But how do you make that clear?
If it was a specific language, comma.
Quartering.
In, in consultation with the coaches.
Right, right. I think that, that, that was my issue, is this doesn't say what I think they were trying to say.
The comment, right Josh?
Yeah. I think that, I think that is the, exactly what they meant.
Yeah. So I would just suggest we change it to specific langu, language incorporating coaches' input and other playing fields. Still doesn't make clear sense to me, I'm sorry.
Might need two sentences.
And discussion of other playing fields. Incorporating coach, coaches' inputs and discussion of other playing fields. I don't know, I'm, I don't know what the person was saying, you know, so it's kind of unfair. If you want to just leave it like that, that's fine. That was just a question that I had.
I, I think having specific in language incorporating.
Coaches' inputs.
Coaches' input, yeah.
Instead of incorporating, how about just involving coaches?
Yeah.
And discussion or?
Well, and maybe instead of and playing field, like, in, when it, and specific languages and, specific language including coaches' input, but then I think and other playing fields is more of like about playing.
Yeah, regarding, regarding playing fields.
Right.
Regarding.
Right.
Yeah. Regarding instead of and other.
I think that is, I feel like that's the intent of what they were.
That's, I mean, I just wanted to clarify it because I, I don't think the intent of what the person was saying was reflected there.
Yep.
The other thing, a couple lines down, it says that there is a community engagement committee that would live to hear ideas from the community.
I mean, sort of true.
Sort of true.
I think that should be loved.
I think they'd love to.
Sorry. And then further down, where is it? There is also discussion from the public discussing how they believe the field was not left in good, good condition after all the work done, citing loss of morale and the Booster Club losing $2,000. I understand the loss of morale, they talked about that. I don't remember the Booster Club losing $2,000.
She did say that.
Okay.
It was in lost, like concession sales.
Okay.
Because they couldn't have, couldn't run the concessions because they didn't have home games.
Yep.
That's fine. I'm sorry. I didn't remember those specifics.
That's the point of these, this, this is what we're supposed to do right now. That's all I got. Be quiet.
All right. All in favor with the changes? Okay. All right. Jen, your time has come.
Give me one second.
All right.
It worked a minute ago, so yeah, that probably not worked out. It wasn't a minute though, it was like an hour ago. So, thank you for coming. So I decided to talk about our goals and vision for the school and then a brief thing about myself, because many of you are new and I am not. And so I felt it was good for you to hear about my why. So here I am, there. And then Ms. Edge is right here. This is my five-year-old, my now 11-year-old, but there he is about four, I believe. So about eight years ago, I was working for Head Start and I went to, Head Start in Bangton County, and I was living up here though, in Wallingford. So I went to Dave Yount's meetings about wanting to make the schools into like certain satellites. So Tinmouth was gonna be the outdoor school, she was very sustainability and so on. So I was like, well, I need my kid to go to Tinmouth. My schedule did not work for that because I wasn't gonna be able to have like busing, he's pre-K anyway, I'm living in Wallingford, I wanted him to go to Tinmouth. So I quit my job and I became a para in Lisa's classroom. I was, she's right there, sorry, pre-K teacher. It was a, a financial difference for my family, but I was willing to take it so my child could have the education I wanted. So, fast forward, eight, seven, eight years, I'm the principal. Halfway through the pre-K year, I long-term subbed in second and third. So I left Lisa sadly. It was short-lived in pre-K and then took over a second and third grade room. And then after that, got a contract to be the second and third, which became like three and four. And that one year it was third, and then it was three and four. Classroom teacher. I loved it. And then when Maureen was going to be retiring, I am one of those people that has always wanted just like a tiny bit more, I need to be challenged at all the time. times, my brain needs to be working. And so, I was like, I think I can do this principal thing, and the best thing about Timmott is that the principal still gets to teach, because I did not want to be removed from the kids. Like, I love teaching, I love that challenge, but it was becoming for me just a little bit routine, and I could have spiced it up like easily, but I was like, I think I can do this. So, I applied, I got it. But they're my why. So, they, Asher was one of the, Asher's my oldest, he's, he's a hockey star in my eyes. And so, he was, his class was one of the originals to start with the natural playground in the outdoor classrooms, going out there twice a day, and then it was really amazing to take on all those outdoor classroom trainings, and we've done some Vermont Fish and Wildlife week-long trainings and learn all of that from the ground up. So I had my own outdoor classroom as a third and fourth grade teacher, it's still up there, and the third and fourth grade teacher now has it, so that's my why. Okay, so how's the year going? I know you all have like some attendance goals, so our attendance is doing really well. Last year we had about 14% that were chronically absent, this year we're at 9.1. I know, the year is early, but we're at 9.1. Nine percent is about six students, just so you have that in mind, and that there were a couple students that had some sicknesses, so I can like actually target what it was, it's nothing that we really have to be too concerned about yet, but that's where we are, and our attendance is still looking good. It usually looks really good, so I'm not, it hasn't been a concern for us up here. Okay, I want to talk about, so we're a small school, last year we had 69 students, this year we have 66. In my head, that's like a big drop because it's three students. In a bigger school of three students, you don't bat an eye, but for us, we do. So, we usually, I want to tell you what happens. We usually use like one to three students to long trail from sixth to seventh grade. This year, one of my fifth graders didn't join sixth grade, they left for long trail. It was a really good fit for them, so like, proud of that, like, that's great. It just took a number away. So, pre-K students, we get a, usually two to three students that come from out of district and are like super excited to be here, and then they have to go away once kindergarten hits because that's the rule. So, they go away, we lose them. And then in 2022 to 2023, no babies were born in Timmott. So, that is going to have an impact on us if people are not creating babies to bring them in here. So, just wanted to give you a little heads up, and this is just our student count for each grade. It doesn't, it does have pre-K on there, but.
Took the best.
Okay, so how's the year going? Continue. So, we have three new teachers, third and fourth is Bridgette Hughes from New Jersey, kindergarten is Alexis Stamey, she's from Rutland area, that's where she was teaching previously. Our art teacher is Maria French, most of you, maybe some of you know that name, from Wallingford, super excited to have her. So we have second year for fifth and sixth is Wade Davis. There are six years Tabitha with one, two, and then Lisa Edge with 25 years. So, I know, right? I had to go ask her because I lost count. So, exciting news, this just happened this morning, I finally got, received a package that we, I applied last year for a Whole Foods grant, Whole Foods like the grocery store, and we got a grant to help us with upgrades in our gardens and our natural class-like playgrounds, so that, that wood out there is part of that. We wanted to keep it authentic with the live edge and all that, so we had to like find it, I called Josh, I emailed asking about lumberyards, we did find some random lumberyard in Middletown, and he's been finding wood for us and calling us when he hasn't so that we can keep it to its true, what it was supposed to be, so. And I'll be buying raised greenhouses, little miniature ones, so we can prolong the growing period because it's very short. And then it was finding that I'm just up here weeding all summer, and I'm not a big gardener. I have lots of plants, but not like gardening, so I don't love to spend my summers gardening in the gardens here at school. So, we're gonna, we're putting a new plans in order for this. So, last year was my first year as the principal, and we have, in the past few years, gotten coordinated curriculum, aligning it. Curriculum takes up a lot of our time, which is wonderful, we need to teach. It also took a little bit of our outdoor classroom time that we were doing regularly. So, my goal this year was I need to find time that every classroom can get out there, and I put it in their schedule. So, every Friday from two to three, every classroom is in the woods. And they've been doing it, so it's been amazing. They're in their classrooms, they're either going for a hike, they're doing some kind of science thing, they're building, they're, you know, fifth and sixth graders reading to little ones in their teepees they've built, we have nature coming inside with cunning sticks. Some kids that don't want to go on the hike, they have been helping me with the pollinator gardens out front and learning about what we should and should not weed, and then every other week they take a hike up the mountain. So, usually that's a once a year thing, but our five, six teacher has been like, I think I can do this with this group every other week. And I was like, you go for it, he does. So, it's been really great to finally get the kids out. So, one, two goes out two to three times a week, pre-K and kindergarten are every day. Lisa's out for about 45 minutes to an hour in the morning in the natural playground, and then in the woods from two to three with kindergarten. And then as I said, sixth grade is taking regular hikes, hikes or working with the littles in their outdoor classroom. Okay, so, Timmott's goal for the year. So, Timmott's staff is going to focus on safety, creating eclectic, collective efficacy around procedures, protocols, and drills, utilizing tabletop scenarios, community partners, and EOP alignment, that's the emergency operations plan. And this is like a follow-up to last year, which was aligning behaviors and expectations within and on a district level. So, we had, as a leadership team, last year met and we realized like, Timmott might not have some of the behavior matrices that everybody else is using, and we should align so that when we're sending these students off to Mill River, they have the same expectations. It wasn't like, oh, at my school I did this, but you can do that. No, they all have the same expectations. So it went really well, and I now wanted to move towards like real nitty-gritty safety. Because we're small and we're out in the country, we become a little relaxed in our safety concerns, you know, having a door propped open because, well, it's beautiful outside, why not? Well, there's a lot of reasons why not. So, getting a little bit harder about that, and then being open about what kind of scenario could happen. So, I found some tabletop scenarios, and you can find them online, but I found that this district in Maryland had an extensive scenarios, and they kind of worked for us. So our most recent one was about a possible car accident where they slid on black ice, totally normal, and hit a telephone pole right outside the school, what do you do? And, so the staff and I talked about like, what would we do, who would be the first responders, where would we move the kids, who's in charge, like, and then who's in charge if I'm not here? Who do we call? And utilizing, in my school, like, I am not the one, if somebody else is better at taking a lead on a situation, I'm going to give them all the confidence in the world to do that, like, they can do that. They don't always have to, it doesn't always have to be me as the leader, but thinking of where our weaknesses are. So we obviously know, we're about 20 to 30 minutes out from like the rescue squad probably getting to us, so what do we do in the meantime? So it was really nice, and we're going to be doing those regularly during staff meetings. So, then, you know, we're going to do fire drills, we did one already, relocations in lock-ins, providing child-friendly discussions, which my staff do regularly with their students, and then to build their confidence. And so, safety isn't just in the school, but it's like out in the outdoor classroom, what do we do? We've, half our staff, at one point all of our staff, but half our staff has had Stop the Bleed, and like, we did some real intense like tourniquets and all of that. So like, we, there's a good chunk of us that know how to handle a real emergency in the woods. And then, you know, talking about the fire drills that we do, we walk over to the church, we were, it was amazing and beautiful, and then just making sure we have proper signs up for students to be able to understand that our visual, and also they can read if they can, but otherwise they're visual. Okay, so, we're continuing to align, we're making sure, I made sure that I was present at the beginning of the year during all duties, so like recess, morning duties, lunch duties, all of those duties, to talk through expectations with students and staff so that everyone was hearing it multiple times that week. So, I made sure I hit every human in this building that came through so they could hear what the expectations are at recess or during lunch, or in the mornings when we're lining up, so that they were all aware. I'm working on relationships with law enforcement to have regular visits to calm nerves. There was a time last year where we had some police officer here, freaked everybody out. There was no concern for anybody's safety, they were just doing a public safety calling in on us, and had nothing to even do with the school, but the students were a little freaked out. So I was like, okay, we need to make that, you know, police officers are not terrifying, and that they can come by and they're just normal people, and they can come by for no reason and say hi. So I'm working on that. I'm going to be meeting most likely with the fire department next week to talk about scenarios and have them as more visitors, though a lot of our students know the fire department people here, but it's good to have like our new staff know who they are. We're ensuring that those who need access have access in emergency situations, we figured that out this summer, Gail, right? We have now keys, the firehouse, the fire department has a key to the main door, we have key cards that work for everyone that needs them, we are in a good place. And recently, I did a walkthrough with Joe Hoffman and Jody to talk about just a safety protocols and to make sure that we're all on the same page. And then there was like, the simplest thing is, safety is like down to, Tabitha's out here in the hallway, and I have this penny war going on among the classes, and I put giant mason jars. And I was like, in my office, I overheard her being like, so what is this jar made of? And I was like, huh. She was like, it's glass, it's on a desk, what does this mean? What does it look like when you're, do we pick them up and carry them all? Do we bump into them? We should be paying attention. So like, the safety around what happens if broken glass, something I would, I did not think of, but she's out there doing, so I was, I was like, huh. So I take a picture of it to remind myself. So, that's our safety goal. So then this summer, I went to, what's it, Waddington, which is the Center for Creative Leadership. I went with Summer and Sean Robinson and Phil, Paul, so we all went, and there, when you go, you have to fill out prior all of these assessments, and then my staff and my people above me, they fill out assessments about me, and then you find out all the things people like or don't like about you, and, you know, and I send it to community members and parents. And then I meet with a coach who's really like gonna tell you what they see. It went actually really well. I was a little nervous and it went, it was fine. But what I found out was I needed to delegate, and I was like, what do they mean by that? Because they, I was in, I've been a teacher and you don't want more stuff added to your day, so I mean, I was like, okay. I'm like, I'm just gonna ask them when I get back what they want. So we were like, that's an easy one, that's not a good goal for me to work on. So what we were seeing is that because we're a new staff, I need to work on collective efficacy, and how am I going to do that, and how am I going to bring all of them together? So, delegation, I did it. We figured out what it was they wanted. Basically, if I, if they're saying, do you need help? I can't say no all the time. And I gave away like three things that I really didn't want to do anyway, and I was like, do it. And so now they're taking it on. And I was like, okay, like the gardens, I got somebody interested in doing the gardens, and some other little things that I easily don't need to be doing, so I was, I was very happy to delegate that off my list. So, collective efficacy. And I've shared this with my entire staff, I told them, I was like, this is what people said about me. So, building collective efficacy. So, we figured it has to be related to students, and what we came up was like, we need a vision. What is Timmott's vision? So that's different than a goal, like, that we're all working on, this is something more fun, if we could say. So, Timmott's small community, there, I have found out recently that some of our students, like, which is fine, like, they have not stayed in hotels. And that's, was a little mind-blowing to me, just in the sense that I spend about three weekends a month in hotels because of my son's traveling, so I was like, oh, you could just come with me. Like, they're not that great, believe me. Usually the waffle machine breaks. So, and then you have a long list, long kit, all these hockey kids wanting waffles that can't get any. So, we're like, what are we going to do to broaden our students', you know, horizons and understand their place in a bigger world? So, on our open house, I had said, let's bring in community partners, and I know some of the schools already have done this, but we had not. So, we brought in the Dolly Parton Imagination Library, 4-H, Girl Scouts, and I believe Boy Scouts, and what really came of it is that we actually are forming, two parents were super excited about Girl Scouts, and they're forming their own little troop. So, I was like, oh, now Timmott has a troop, which did not realize that was going to happen from that, but it did. Five, six is going to go to Boston for an overnight. So, we have this wonderful fund called the Bill Jenkins Fund, and it's to get students in five, six, out of the state in an overnight every other year, and we're able to start that back up, thanks to his daughter, Ally, and we're fundraising like heck right now to get us to Boston. I have like our little, what we're going to do, it's already set for the 14th and 15th of May, and we're going to the Freedom Trail, that's going to be a guided tour, we're going to the Observation Deck, and the New England Aquarium, and a guided tour of Fenway. So, they are super excited, and this happens every other year, so that it hits all the kids, but we don't like have to feel overwhelmed with the crazy amount of fundraising like we have to do right now because it's the first new year. So that's happening. And then the staff decided, like, how can we introduce the students to like the larger world, like, we can't take them on planes places? So, we came up with passports around the world, and I actually, you know, have it? Oh, I have a little passport here, this is fake. And I have all these stamps. So, this month, we are talking about the Day of the Dead and the juxtaposition of Halloween, they're two different things, completely two different. So Mexico, and we are a school that has Spanish three times a week, so, and Anna, our Spanish teacher, talks about the Day of the Dead, reads some books, and shares their culture. So, we decided, let's start there. So, I have a little bulletin board, we're slowly talking about the Day of the Dead and that culture and what that means, and so that, you know, where Halloween is more scary, this is not supposed to be scary. And on our Halloween Day, like, the big parade that we have, we'll have some activities based around that, we're going to show some videos during lunch about the celebration. And then my special educator, Heather Kent, came up with every month, and I don't have that list on me, but it was breaking it away from like the traditional, like, I know Canada's in there because we figured we should let them know what's happening up there. And then, but there's like other random countries that are not, it wasn't just like England and things like that, it was, we're branching out. So she came up with, for how she did it, I'm not sure, but I loved it. So, and that would be one of my delegations, I said, you got it, that was beautiful, we're doing it. And then I'm continuing to try to share the wider community event, so when people outside of, you know, in Rutland County and outside of it, tell me like, hey, can you tell your, you know, kids about this? I'm sharing it so that they see that there's other options out there. And, that is it. Questions, comments, anything?
I'll just say, because I experience the school all the time, but one of the, like, in the safety rounds, I mean, like, we had a huge, the, one of the biggest, I think, shifts that occurred when you came president was how our pickup changed really drastically from like, you know, it used to be, kids would just come out, basically, and like.
And run into the parking lot.
Right, right, and it was like, very, for parents, it was like pretty, you know, we had all chit-chat and commune and then, but we had, we switched to more of just like a direct pickup. And the first couple days were not great.
So we had to readjust.
And we, but like, you know, there was, and, and now like, it's, how it goes is, it works great. And I still.
We still connect. We still connect with parents too. That was the thing is that we were terrified that we weren't gonna connect with parents because it's really important. It is. And, and we do, we still, I'm like going up to cars, talking to the parents real quick, getting their kids in. Some parents get here early, they jump out of their cars and they talk to each other, but they know as soon as that door opens, school's just gonna want you in that car. But yeah, it was.
And I, but I really, I appreciate like, cause at, coming out of school where you're giving up and I understand like, you know, Shane and Cam, but I, I don't know what other schools do, but in the morning, we drop our kids off in the circle and they are, unless it's really bad weather, they're outside until eight o'clock where they do their morning meeting outside. And it's like one of those things that is just so satisfying because most of the time our kids have a lot of wiggles that they wanna get out. And it's just a nice, I can't imagine doing that when I was little and I could, like, it just seems so pleasant, you know? Yeah.
What's discussed during lockdowns? What are you telling the children?
Um, usually it's like a bear has come into the building. It depends, it's, you know, developmentally appropriate. So I'm not telling, you know, precares like, so when the gunman comes in, like that's not at all. Lisa's talking about a bear, a storm. She does a storm. And then like once we hit first second, we're gonna talk a bear. Second or third and fourth, it depends on your students. You gotta know your students. So there's classes that you can be like an intruder. You can use just that word. Or if it's a very, you know, younger, third and fourth, you might go with the bear idea. Because I actually do have a story of when there was a school that actually left their door and a bear came in, into an art room. So it's a real thing. And I would be like, you're locking, you're shutting down right now, everybody, lock it down. And then in five, six, you can say bear, they all are gonna go with what they know, which is the shooter kind of situation.
And we have a 30-page document that's all research-driven on how to do these that we go over once a year.
And we have a book that we read to the younger students. It's.
I'm not scared of a parent.
Yes.
I just, like when I was in elementary, I'm old, so we, we would get under our desks to save ourselves from nuclear attack, right?
Oh, yeah.
But, but I don't think it's scarred us in the way that I see children scarred from the live shooter drills.
They, so we don't ever call them a live shooter drill. So it's, you know, last year I did a moose drill, so outside. And I just, I, I prepped them. I was like, I'm gonna yell moose because we've had like a giant German shepherd come running down and they all freaked out. So, and he was nice, you know? And so I yelled moose and they knew that if I yelled moose, it was most likely a moose because that's a potential coming down this, that they were to take off into their, towards their classrooms and get into the building. So we've addressed it that way. This year will be one of my first lockdowns because we didn't address it as much last year because I was like, ah, don't need to starve my students yet. But we're going to do it. When I was a classroom teacher, never, they, they were totally fine with the conversations at third and fourth grade level, which is what I know. They really took pride in coming up with like, oh, I wanna be the one that puts the, the chair in the door and turns it and they all practiced so that they all had this confidence. And it's building that confidence and awareness and knowing that, and if, and that's where it's like doing those tabletop scenarios with my teachers is building their confidence. Because if they're confident, their students are gonna feel a lot safer. If you have a teacher that's like.
Yeah, they do look to us for.
Right. That is gonna be a little bit different. So, and I've always offered to go into the classrooms with the teachers if they're not comfortable with it and talk with them about it, the students. So, yeah, good question. Thank you.
Anybody else?
The other thing, just, and she pointed out during it, but one of the reasons that this art, like the plan for our small, small schools is that they're teaching principals, right? They're not just exclusively principals. And so they're, because you're teaching math and.
And shared reading.
Shared reading. And she also.
A little bit of intervention.
And a little bit of intervention with specific students. And so like that is an important, I think as we're going forward and we're talking about our schools, I think that is a big part of the conversation. It's like the staff that we are, that the staff that we have in the building are staff that we need in the building, you know?
Every one of my staff is utilized to the brim. Like, I mean, in order to get the, some students the services they need, like an intervention for an EST, not talking like special ed, it sometimes requires myself. And so the willingness to do that or finding, you know, math intervention is in the house now, so that's twice a week, but what if the student needs it a little bit more intensely? And then we have Joan Latuca for reading intervention and she's fabulous, but there's sometimes what if you need accelerated versions of this? And that's something where like I can step in and help, where you can't expect a multi-age classroom teacher at like teaching third and fourth. And now I would like you to differentiate all of the students, meet all their IUP goals, and then you have this accelerated student that we need to kind of put into fifth grade level. Can you figure out how to do that at the same time? So it's like, I can help with that and guide them through that, yeah.
Could you talk a little bit, a little bit about accelerated students and how you accommodate those?
Yes.
I understand it that there's a, a pretty set structure, at least at Wallingford, for how reading interventions are done that involves like groups and things like this that is very formulaic.
Yes.
And this idea of extension seems unusual slash new to me.
Yes.
So tell me about that.
So, I mean, we're still working it out because it's new to us because you don't usually, it's not like you regularly have students that are above and beyond, you know, that four level where they could teach the class is what we kind of say. And so, not teach the class, but teach a student how to do it.
I understand.
So for myself, what we're doing is this Bookworms, if you're familiar with it, it runs off, and I, I was one of the original like take on the Bookworms people. So you, shared reading is always the same formula. We choral read, we partner read, and then you answer questions and then you do in your workbook. And as the years go on, the books get a little bit more difficult and you talk about harder things. So if a student is like off the charts in fourth grade and that those books are too, like style levels are just not, they're too easy, the comprehension she, this person can dig deeper, we're gonna try out for fifth grade. Because there's not saying like, I don't agree for math. So math is a really hard thing to skip a math grade. You skip math, you could lose all of this fundamental stuff that we don't know if you have or not. And it's not just like, go ahead. And we're not skipping fifth grade or, or fourth grade. We're holding them to the conversations that fifth graders are having around those books. And then the writing piece for Books, Bookworms, it's like first grade, you write a pair, like three to five sentences or something. Then second grade, you write a little bit more. Third grade, you're up to three paragraphs. Fourth grade, four. Fifth and sixth, you're writing maybe a couple pages. So we're gonna push that student to be writing more. We're gonna challenge them more. And then math, what I have been doing.
This needs to happen in all of.
Is.
I said, this needs to happen in all of our buildings. Period.
So, you know, like I said, it doesn't, I don't have like 10 students that meet that by any means. And sometimes it's only a student that can meet like the PLA part, but maybe math are just, you know, they're just chugging along. And so for math right now, it's, it's been interesting and it's a learning experience for myself. I love math. If I could just teach all math and be the principal, I probably would just do that, but there's not enough time. So what we're doing is she meets with me briefly. We look at the modules for like, say module one in fourth grade. I go through the lessons. We see if she can quiz out of them or assess out of them. And then I spiral review regularly every other week with those to make sure I wasn't like missing something that she's not getting. And then I move on to the next lesson. So I'm still following the curriculum, but at a faster pace. And then putting in little projects because they also like, I'm not here every day because I have like leadership or maybe there's a workshop I wanna go to for a principal thing. And so there's like little projects that they can do that will work to strengthen those skills.
Thank you.
Anybody? Dave?
So how does Timoth and Clarendon and Wallingford and Shrewsbury all stay on the same page? I mean, you've given a lot of discussion about your own emphasis and so forth.
Yeah.
And I understand that, you know, that's been true with all teachers throughout time. They all have their own slant and their own personalities and stuff. But what keeps you all on the same page? And the second question I have is what happens when a student falls behind and you sort of can't keep them up?
Well, that's when, oh, okay, let me answer that because that's fresh in my head. So with intervention, that's where intervention and like our reading intervention and our math intervention will come through and we'll do an educational support team meeting on that student to help find ways to catch them up. Is it like a processing of like, I don't know how to stay organized and that's why they can't keep up? Or is it they need an extra push? And so we will figure that out as a team and it's to meet whatever student have, I mean, there's multiple ways to do that. So.
Does it always work though?
You know, for the most part, yes. I mean, we've seen successes and it might not be like they're off their EST every year, but it's, they're meeting their goals and they're making progress. They're moving in an upward slope. Like it's not going down, they're not getting worse, they're not getting stagnant, but they're moving up. It may be at a slower pace than their peers, but the fact that they're improving is what we're looking for at their level. And as far as like staying on the same page with my other elementary schools, we talk all the time. So.
Use the same workbooks and modules?
Oh, yes. Everything's exactly the same. And there's doc, you know, curriculum that's coordinated and it's outlined in April, you should be here and, you know, in August, you should, don't be anywhere in August, be at home. But in like September, this is where we're starting and this is how we're moving. And there's like some flexibility in that because things happen. But this, we're all like, every third grade teacher is about the same page.
You think it works?
I do. And I've seen it because we've had meetings and I go to the teacher meetings and they're all talking about the same things. And the district has worked really hard and up until two years ago, I was on all those curriculum board meeting, meetings and stuff. And we worked really hard to align it and to really fine tune it and to make it easy and doable for our teachers.
And the other, last comment I'd have is, it's pretty neat, you know, that you've been a para, you've been a teacher in the third and fourth grade and now you're a principal.
Yes, I know.
So all I can say is way to go.
Thank you.
All right, Jen, thank you so much. That was great. Okay. Favorite topic, transportation. Do we have any updates?
Yes, a quick update. I am still waiting for first student to give me a proposal. She did have one ready, but it wasn't till like four o'clock today and I did not feel that I could be prepared to present that. But on a positive note, we are in the process of hiring an interim part-time coordinator, transportation coordinator. So this way it will allow the buildings and grounds to focus more on that and that this person will be able to handle all this. She's a former employee. I don't wanna say her name, the name, because the contract hasn't been signed, but it's, we're very, we feel very fortunate.
It would be for the remainder of the year or for a short period of time?
A short period of time until we can find a coordinator. Because we just, it's, there's a lot that goes into that, as I'm sure you can imagine. And we do have a candidate that has applied, so we will be moving forward to interview. And so it's, it's positive.
And given that we're in Timoth's, how, are there transportation concerns in Timoth?
We, our, we have the one, we're, we're one bus and, you know, Ms. Cheryl drives and then she does stuff in the school as well.
Correct.
So she is like the prime example of what we would like to have. You know, like she's in the school, she's driving kids, so it's like.
Amazing.
Yeah, right. And so we don't, we're isolated from the consolidations and stuff like that, so we don't have those same problems. But if we could find more of, of her, that would be great. So, you know.
Okay.
Find some.
Cloning? Okay, anybody else have anything they wanna ask Cheryl about transportation or?
Well, we've got a piece from finance. I don't know if you wanna, if we could pluck that out of the finance piece and talk about it now with the, but do we have anything, Stan, I'm looking to you, about the bus and the trade-in, the trade-in of the bus and that piece?
Oh, yeah.
That was ordered back in February.
Yeah, did we get any new?
It's ready to be, ready to be processed. I hacked onto the finance committee with a proposal from Cressy, the manufacturer that we are purchasing the bus from. We have a, a used bus that we purchased back in 2023. And it's basically from what I got from Connie and from Tim is that it's been a lemon. It was a 2020 bus that we bought in 2023 and they really don't use it anymore. So we offered it back to Cressy. They came in with a trade-in value of $24,000, which wasn't gonna be enough to cover what we have for our lease payout. So I told the finance committee, we would go back to see if they could improve on that number. They did. They came back with $34,000, which would cover our lease payment of $30,700. So in that respect, that works out to our advantage that we ended up being able to pay that lease off and have a little more equity to put down towards the new bus.
What made it a lemon?
It was constantly getting repair, major repairs, like it'd be talking in the $5,000 to $10,000 range. And I guess my understanding, there was another one that was gonna be due. Cressy has offered to take the bus sight unseen and they gave us the value sight unseen. Tim started it up, said everything was, was running and the brake worked, so they, they're gonna come and take it up. It's, it's a plus that we did need according to them, so we have more than enough buses to.
Thank you, Stan.
All right. Act 73 update. Gail, did our letter go out? Yay, thank you so much for doing that. I believe it was from Shrewsbury. Was it in the shoes, last Shrewsbury Times that was asking about this? So it might be in the next one.
If, yeah, the next one's, the deadline is the 20th to get into the November Times.
Okay. And same for Wallingford. Clarendon, we had to do a mailing. That went out today. We got the, so all of, hopefully you guys have seen the letter that came and it kind of outlines the Act 73, which is the redistricting. Just to report, I mean, there's three maps that are out there. And one of them is a Career and Technical Center map, which would be a district of all the towns that send, send students to Stafford, which is basically all of Rutland County. It's a county map, which is the same, so I don't understand. It's, it's pretty much the same map. And then they're talking about a BOSI's map, which BOSI stands for Board of Cooperative Educational Services. And it's where all your specialized services come from one organization. And that is, goes from, I think Mill River all the way down to Bennington. So that one, that's not a proposed map, it's just been drawn up.
Yeah, so there's the, it's like that's where, it wouldn't be the governance map, but it would be where those things would exist.
Yeah. It's, yeah. So we, I, Cheryl and I, and I think all of you guys hopefully have been reading the information from Vermont School Board Association. And they recently did a survey, which we conducted a survey of staff and community and parents. And we were able to take that information and send it to the VSB, Vermont School Board Association. They then took, I mean, the amount of data, it's, it's mind boggling, but they had, I forget how many now, what percentage of schools or school boards replied. But they took all that information and one of the major, major things that came out is save our small elementary schools. So just to circle back around to maintenance, one of the things that I think Building and Grounds has been really focused on. grounds has been really focused on is making sure our buildings are in good shape because we don't want them to come and say, well, this building just cannot, you know, cannot go on. And so, you know, we're really protective of our small schools, I think as a school board. I'm from Clarendon, I'm in the big, you know, almost the big school, but I know our small schools are really, really important. And I think as a board, we, you know, we're really watching. But there's really not much in terms of decision-making right now. It's just kind of being aware of what kind of maps are coming out and what kind of requirements they're looking at. You know, there's some concern about whether Mill River will stay open. I think we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. Even when there are three maps from this task force that's working on the maps and it goes to the legislature. So if the legislature, Dave's laughing because he's been there. If the legislature doesn't choose a map or chooses not to go forward, then everything, everything kind of falls apart. And I don't know, Stan, if you could, since you're here, I'll just put you on the spot, talk a little bit about how the, if we switch to a foundation formula, how that would affect us, our, our district? Because my understanding is we're pretty close to whatever that number is.
Yeah, we saw preliminary numbers. I wanted to say we were probably, I want to say $500 to $600 under that block grant, but that did include a million dollar surplus that we've been applying, which may put us slightly over that number, but we were definitely within that range of the block grant where, you know, me and Brian at the time felt that it really would have negligible effect on our district.
And on our taxes, essentially.
Right.
Because some districts that have a lower per pupil spending will have to bring their spending up to whatever that amount is and then they'll have to pay the taxes on it. So it is, I have a feeling that there's going to be a lot of resistance to, to that, to taking away local control of budgets, because we won't vote on budgets after.
Wait, when I said 500, 600, that was per student.
Per student, so, yeah. Yeah, so after 2028, if this all goes according to plan, we won't vote on budgets anymore. We won't have any.
You still have to budget for the funding that's received though, so how would that work?
Right.
At a regional level.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Whatever new board is constructed.
Or even it could, it would just be the.
You got this much money.
The legislator says what the funding is, right? Basically says that you don't have to vote for it.
Isn't there a piece in there that if you are spending more than what is granted by the state, then you actually have to add that to the ballot to, to vote on the.
Yes.
Basically raising that money locally in your local district.
Right.
So there'd be some kind of budgeting.
Well, if you wanted to, yeah, if you wanted to pay more.
Potentially municipalities will enact additional property taxes on top of that to cover those.
I think that's how they're, yeah. And, but that kind of takes you right back to how this all originally started with towns with more means.
Right.
Can spend more on their schools. So I think they're, we'll see how they, how they handle that.
Yeah. There's a pub, so in that last meeting, they, they stated, they set up for public hearings and the one that's going to be relevant to us is on October 2nd, 22nd, at the Rutland High School between six and eight. And they can do it, you can join virtually.
Yep.
And so there'll be, that, that one is just a public comment. It's not one of the official meetings. It was just, it's just a listening sessions. So if anybody wants to make comments or just watch that, you can. And there is a, I, you go to the, the agency of administration has all the information, but I think if you just Google Vermont task, Vermont District Task Force, it brings you to their specific webpage and you can find the information there.
And actually, I think I'll put that in the Friday newsletters.
Yeah, if we can get the principals to send that out, that would be good.
Anything else on, oh, just one other thing is on October 23rd, I will be attending a meeting with the regional superintendents and board members to just start discussing what do we see, what, you know, to see if we can front load some ideas to send to the legislature. Cheryl is going to be at the finance meeting, which you guys are all invited to.
Yes.
At five o'clock on October 23rd.
Yep.
Just want to hear from the community, what priorities you have as we're building the budget. Stephen can talk to it more as chair of the finance committee. We had one yesterday, we had one person and we were still able to talk for an hour and a half, so.
And that's at the Mill River Library?
Mill River Library, yes.
I will send out another message.
Okay.
To remind people.
And just to remind you, all of our meetings at Mill River are hybrid. You can click on, if you're unsure how to do that, just contact Rebecca and she can send you a link. And you can make public comment from there or you can just, just watch. And William tapes it and it's on, you can see it on YouTube if you search Mill River School Board. Anything else on, for the good of the order of Act 73? We're, we're staying on top of it as best we can.
Yeah.
Okay, so, all right, class size update.
Okay, according to board policy, it's my responsibility once a year to update you on class sizes. I did send out a memo for you to look at because I think the, otherwise the numbers are just going to kind of all blend together. So I, I looked at it as overall by school, how many students we had in the school as of that date. And you know, that can always change if we have somebody withdraw or someone come in. But it looks like 48% of our students are at MRU and then, so I did look at the actual numbers, the percentage. And then what I looked at and primarily because of, well, class size I have to look at for you, but also with Act 73, I wanted to see, are we compliant? And it looks like we are in a very good place. So where we have an issue at the elementary school, and that's not an issue, we have a second grade that had, currently has 10 students. That is something that according to the legislation, it has to be three years in order for that to be an issue. So I'm not overly concerned about that because the number was 12. So we are too short at that point. And then when we go to our smaller schools, Shrewsbury and Tinmouth, they have two grade levels combined so that they're able to, we are well within, we're in compliance with any numbers. You can see the numbers here.
Send that to the.
Yeah, I don't think we have that.
It should be, it's not part of your board packet?
Yeah.
No. Okay.
Share it out with you, Ryan.
I'm going to share it to you right now. Let me send it to the board and not everyone.
I wonder if you, where Jane go? Oh, okay, I was going to say if we could put it up there, but that's all right.
I'm sorry that that's not included. That should have been in your board packet.
Got it. Well, yeah. All right.
Question, when you, you have pre-K and K4 called out?
Mm-hmm.
Does that mean pre-K is pre-K3?
Yes. It's the, I used the terms that were listed in our documents to be consistent. And I did highlight the Wallingford grade two. Like I said, I am not concerned.
How do, how does the Mount Holly kids or any of the tuition kids that attend Mill River included in these numbers?
They are included. I didn't put them out specifically. Sean would know the exact number of students we have.
I thought he said.
I want to say like 20, didn't he say that we had all but like a few of the students from the graduating class? And then when you look, I, because they're different, I, so I separated out grade six through eight, or look at that, seven through eight, I'm going to fix that. To show you, and this says for required, and so the legislation says required courses only, so that means your basic ELA, they're your four core areas and those are the class sizes. I did show the differences in my grade seven. It was just easier, I put an average out, but I also thought it was important to show you that each class for ELA, math, science and social studies. And how many students? The high school becomes a little bit more difficult to parse out when I started looking at this. And you can see even on this document, because I did ask all the principals to give me feedback, I wanted to make sure that I wasn't missing something. So in high school, we have a variety of levels of courses, right? From our most supportive classes, which tend to be lower, and then even our higher level classes, which also tend to be lower. And it's one of the things that we, we look at, that even though we're a small school, it's important that our students do get the opportunities for AP history, European history or, you know, like the higher level. I didn't put it here, but like you see, French one has 22, which is great. And then when you get up to French four, the numbers decrease. But we don't want to, it, it's a balancing act. I've done high school scheduling and it, you have to decide because you do want to give them the opportunities, right? So, and our biggest classes was our senior band and chorus. And I had put it at 34, but Sean did have a note here about, it's the group that bounces between both. So he looks, there's 62 and 58. So, and that's, that's actually very strong numbers, especially for our size, for our music program. So I, any questions? I'm sorry you didn't get this ahead of time. I wanted you to be able to look at it and not just hear me say numbers.
So it's like, because in the high schools, it's like if you're on, most of the kids that are in a higher level, if they're taking an AP class, they're not going to be in a regular English class at that point anyway, right? So it's not like you're really pulling that, because that would be the concern, right? It's like, oh, well, we're offering this higher level class or lower level class, that means each specific class isn't enough students? Is that how it works at the high school level? Or is it?
It's, it's, it doesn't fall within the number that Act 70, that the law says. However, those classes are exempt.
Right.
So we're fine with it. They, they want us to be able to offer those things. It's just when you start looking, right, I'm looking at the elementary classes and then you see these and they're much smaller, but it's important because even some of them, like our alternative ed or the fundamentals, they are small by design and that's going to be in any, even a huge school. But I was, I have to tell you, I was actually quite impressed with the number of AP courses we offer. And I think that that's something we should celebrate and share more out, right? Because that does keep our students in district because if we don't have these things, they will be going, they will be transferring to another district that offers it. So our math, our math offerings were, I didn't put any in here, there were so many to choose from, but we have AP stats and AP calc and I was pleased with that.
For those classes, like the one with your, like AP history, two kids, so are they, is there like another history class that's occurring and then there's an AP, like there's just those two kids are sitting in the same classroom and doing AP history?
It's my, yes, yes. And then there would be, you know, the, the courses that every student will take, like the US history, I'm sure is mandated. And that would be just a college, I'm not sure what we call it, if it's college prep or what we call, I don't think actually there's any name to it, just other than US history. And that's where most of your students will go into and those are the ones that we need to keep. If, if it is a course that is required, we have to keep it within the, the class sizes. Nine to 12. I didn't put the number here. That I want to say is 18 students. I'll fix that. No, 15, uh, no, 15 for seven through eight and it's, I believe it's 18 for nine through 12. Any other questions, comments, thoughts? And next year, if there's a different way you would want to see this information organized, please let me know. I thought elementary was cake, right? And then I get to the high school, I'm like, oh, how am I going to represent this accurately? So.
Committee reports, personnel, honey?
Excuse me, yes. Next personnel committee meeting, I believe would be November 5th, is that the first Wednesday?
Yes.
At six.
Policy, Kim's not here.
I don't believe a quorum was reached.
Kimberly asked me to speak to it.
Oh, okay, great.
Yep. We, we did not have a quorum last night, so we didn't have an official meeting. But the, our next meeting would be Monday, the 10th of November. And the question was, would that be at 5:30 or 6:30? And Rich, I know part of that was around your course.
Yeah, I teach until 6:15. I teach until 6:15.
Okay, so you'd prefer 6:30?
I just declare, I normally begin on Tuesdays, but that's going to be Monday because of the better.
Oh.
Oh, that's okay.
Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't look there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Five is great.
So Monday, the 10th at 5:30 will be the next policy meeting.
And do we have, we have a policy for second read?
Yes, we have policy F32 for a final read. So I would make a motion that we adopt policy F32 transgender and gender non-conforming students. For discussion. All those in favor? Thank you. And as I said, Monday, the 10th at 5:30 will be our next meeting. Was that it? Thank you.
Next is buildings and grounds, it's me. So we have, we haven't met since the last one. I'm glad we talked a, a good amount about buildings and grounds and I think, I think we're, I think this, this next meeting coming up, we were talking about what we're, how are we going to organize the buildings and grounds going through for this year? Because we've spent a lot of the money already for the, in the surplus fund and figuring out how we're going to move forward. And I, so I think that's going to be, I think now we have a little bit more information of how we want to deal with it and how we can communicate more effectively in those meetings, I think is going to be an important.
Can we also add to the agenda fields, groundskeeper and athletic?
Yeah, I can, let me, I can.
Yeah, just have a conversation about that, I think after the finance meeting, that was pretty much one of the major topics of discussion.
Yeah, and so our next meeting, I think it needs to be re, I think I have it in as. Yeah, and so our next meeting, I think it needs to be re, I think I have it in at 6:00, but I think we wanted to rewind it at 5:00.
Five. And what's the date?
The 27th.
Oh, 27th, yep.
That's all for that.
Okay, Community Engagement, Sarah's not here. Yeah, I'm assuming that the next meeting will be the second Wednesday in-
I believe that's correct.
Because it would have been today.
Yeah.
But instead, but the community meeting yesterday was the-
Yeah, we did that instead, yep. So 15 and 14, the 19th? I mean, the five and, five and 14 is the 19th, is that so?
Yeah, it's the 19th.
And that will probably be at 6:30, 6:00 or 6:30. She's gonna be back on Tuesday, I'll check with her. Okay, Finance.
I'll start with the payroll, Accounts Payable Warrants. We've got one from October 1st, in the amount of $8,211.40, and from October 10th, in the amount of $735,172.51, for a total of $743,383.91. I'll make a motion to accept these payroll warrants, that's right. Discussion, all in favor? And Accounts Payable Warrants, General Fund in the amount of $428,340.49, General Fund Bus Payoff in the amount of $30,791.57, General Fund in the amount of $8,040.74, Food Service in the amount of $1,202.80, and After School Program in the amount of $825, for a total of $469,200.60. And for Student Activities, Mill River in the amount of $950.01, and Wallingford in the amount of $323.12, for a total of $1,273.13. I'll make a motion to accept these Accounts Payable Warrants. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Our last meeting was on October, we've had two meetings since the last meeting, since the last board meeting. Our last Finance Committee meeting was on October 6th. We discussed, we got an update from Stan on our current fiscal year, and the budget that we're, and the surplus that we're looking at in our current fiscal year. Looks like, just to, I could send this out to folks, I guess. This didn't go out to the whole board?
It did go out to the whole board.
It did go out to the whole board, okay. The, the number that looks, the safe number for what we believe is our current budget was the 300, 312,837 dollars is what we're currently looking at this fiscal year's surplus. So that, yeah, that's what we're looking at for this year. And we've discussed a couple of things on the board that would affect, that weren't budgeted for. And this would be surplus money that would potentially be available for those, those things. We will be getting a rollover budget to look at as one of our budgets, as we're, we're looking at budgeting for the upcoming fiscal year. These are things that are gonna be coming in the next meetings this month. And we'll have a meeting at the end of the month. The last piece was, we got an update where this is getting revised, but it, it looks like health insurance is gonna be one of those external pressures on the budget, where it looks like there, we're, the number we're using at this point is penciling in a 13.7% increase, which maybe is a little bit lower than that now, but-
There was a meeting, there was a meeting up top on Wednesday, they're gonna come up with their, their number that they're gonna ask for next Tuesday or Wednesday. And they, they only, the only comment was that it was trending better than what they had put up.
They're trending better than 13.7%. Last year, they asked for us to look at a, what, 11 point?
1.9.
11.9, so-
11.14.
Higher, yeah. Higher, looking, looking higher than last year potentially.
I just got a thing in the mail today that my health insurance, Blue Cross Blue Shield, is going up 16%.
And then did they, did they change the, is it gonna be a different insurer?
Yeah.
Is it gonna be the state contract?
Just for Medicare advantage.
Just for Medicare advantage, okay. I didn't know if that was also the teacher's.
I don't think so.
Yep, it's going, again, it's 16%, all of the stuff that I got.
It's gonna be 50%, and then the, the-
Yeah.
The new one's better, I guess.
Yes, only 16%.
What's driving the huge increases?
If you could solve that problem-
Great question.
There's a brave little state about it.
I mean, I think state demographics, I think, are a big piece to that. You've got less workforce paying into, paying into it, you have more older folks using it.
And, you know, you get a bill from Blue Cross Blue Shield, I get a bill from Blue Cross Blue Shield, and the hospital charges, I'll pick a number, $5,000. Blue Cross Blue Shield pays maybe a thousand. And I don't pay anything, so I don't know what happens to that other money. I mean, it just amazes me constantly that, you know, I might have a $20 copay or something, but I don't understand why the hospital charges $5,000 when they know they're only gonna get a thousand.
And it is a thing that UVM has high, some of, I, we're at least in the, I don't want to say the top one, but like the top five reimbursement at requests, like there, you, the UVM network specifically asks for a lot back, and that's one of the, one of the drivers.
Yeah.
Because there's not really that many other places we get to go, and, you know, as the state, where our population of our state lives, you know?
Yeah.
It seems like there's so much smoke and mirrors.
But even outside of our, I mean, this is a bad thing.
And it could get worse.
Right, but like Maine has a similar demographic, but there is like bad, but not as bad, right? They're, they're like, they're not having the legislature have to say, well, if you become financially insolvent, we'll fund your, we'll fund you for the year, where that's what our legislation had to do last year.
And I think that's, that's one of the things that always, we have to remember is the legislature took over the health insurance, so it's no longer negotiated at the local level. And if you measure the success of that, and think of what may happen under Act 73, I'm not real confident that it's gonna work real well. But, I'll be quiet.
Another, another, I think, budget challenge we're gonna have, and it's not so much a challenge in our budgeting process, but what the community will feel after our budgeting process, is last year, the, the state buying, after budgets were approved, the state bought, bought down-
Its tax rate.
Buy a lot.
Buy a lot, by over 100-
118 million.
Yeah, what was that, 100?
118.
118 million. So, so we, we had come up with a budget that was gonna have what, you know, we're trying to keep in a, in what we feel is a, a stable range of, of budget increases. And with that buydown, most folks saw a pretty, relatively flat.
Yeah, some negatives.
And some negative, Tim, that huge, huge negative. Decrease to the, to the tax rate in the end. So for us to even, you know, stay the course with what we would have done between year one and two and three, folks will see that as a bigger swing up.
Yeah.
In their taxes.
Well, right, and they, the most recent, they said they were, they were 7% lower than what the, the revenues for the state they were. And that, that was a while ago, so it might be better now.
Right, so that, that will be another challenge, and it doesn't necessarily affect us so much on the front end of our budgeting, but it will be a challenge of, for the voters to-
For the voters.
Yeah. To be hit with that, with that upswing.
Aren't the federal cuts that are being proposed to Medicaid gonna have an impact on healthcare prices? I mean, it would seem like if the government doesn't pay it, it's gonna have to come out of you and I. Because those people are gonna show up at the hospital, whether they're, if they're sick, whether they got insurance or not. And so it's a shift from the government paying it to individuals paying it. And so I see it as another cost driver. It's a year out or so.
Hospital closes, and then it's even harder. You know, if the smaller hospitals close, the regional hospitals close, then, you know, then you have more potential for a hospital to dominate the prices.
All that, health insurance is out of our- So these, these are some of the things that we're keeping in mind as we kind of build the budget for fiscal year 27. And we've also had some, we've had some community meetings, and a lot of community input on things that we, that folks feel maybe are potential new directions to go, or new concerns or priorities that might need strategic additions to the budget. So transportation is a thing that we're looking at. And we'll be looking for different proposals with the fiscal year 27 budget, as well as, where are our big ones? Transportation and-
Athletic.
And the athletic fields, and, and kind of Buildings and Grounds Maintenance sort of pieces, so. That, more, more to come. Our next meeting that we have is going to be the Community Conversation Meeting on October-
23rd.
23rd, at, we moved it up to 5:00 PM to accommodate the music event that night. Oh, before I move on, we had, we have to vote on something. Another thing we discussed at that last meeting was moving, the board has recently updated a, a policy or created a policy that addresses class, class funds, and how they will carry on from one year to a new year. That wasn't, that policy wasn't in place for a while, so we've had a few classes that the class funds are just, you know, accrue, or, you know, waiting. Waiting to go somewhere. So we, we discussed, and the discussion in Finance Committee was, and the, the proposal from, Jody, do you wanna? Take over.
So the board recently adopted a policy that says from the graduating year 2024 to the future, all remaining class funds after a class graduates will be rolled over to the next class. However, there are some remaining class funds from the classes of 2020 until that policy comes into place. One of our frequent senior advisors, Tracy Spencer, had talked to representatives, not every single kid from each graduating class, but representatives from each one of those graduating classes, about what they might like to do with those funds. In one specific case, there was substantial money left over, and that was that core class of 2020 who had to have to drive through graduation. Those representatives have all agreed that they would like to roll those funds over into the Mary Bride Scholarship, to allow that scholarship to continue on for many years from the residuals from that scholarship. We decided, Stephen and I, that it might be most appropriate to discuss that first in Finance and then bring it to the full board, because it's a single-time financial action. And so that would be the specific wording. Let me just pull up C3 to make sure that I have the year correct. One second. So, yeah, so basically, there was a motion, and it was passed, to recommend transfer of the funds to the Scholarship Fund to the full board. So that's what we're doing. Yeah, and it's, the scholarship for, for those who are interested is for students who are making a contribution to their community. So it's, it can be, it's not necessarily an academic scholarship, but, and the total, I guess the total of the Scholarship Fund is somewhere between 11 and $12,000. There was like $10,000 left from the, as Jody said, most of it was from the 2020 class who never got to have their prom or their graduation or project graduation or anything. So, yeah, so that's, you had made that motion, and do you want to make that motion again?
Yeah, so I would make the motion to transfer the funds that, from, what are the years?
20 to 23.
Oh, yeah, that's right there, 20 to 23, into the Mary Bride Scholarship Fund.
Second, Rich. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay. Voila. All right.
All right. So yes, our next community meeting on the 23rd at 5 o'clock in the Mill River-
Library.
Library, and we should try and share that out and get folks to come. It's a great place to, to learn more about the budget process and to, to talk about really your thoughts and feelings about district direction and how that might affect school budgets. And then we have a Finance Committee meeting on the 27th, after that Buildings and Grounds meeting at 6:00 PM. And we will be, at that point, hopefully, getting a few more, we'll have a few budget scenarios to, to look at for fiscal year 27. So that would be the meeting that we look, hopefully, at, you know, what's a rollover budget, which would be a, you know, a small, small increase to the budget to roll over what we have this year, what would be a, a budget with cuts, and what would be a budget that has some of these additional things that people have been bringing up at the community, community meetings, transportation and, you know, field maintenance and those sort of things. So that would be the, the 27th meeting, it's gonna be a good one. That's all.
Come one, come all. Okay, Transact Other Business, does anybody have anything?
Just to say, you know, I mean, we all have a fiduciary responsibility for the schools, and, you know, that's mostly what we do here, but just to, you know, it's, it's cool to come out to the school, I'm, I'm glad we were able to come into Tinmouth. And, but the presentation we had tonight is, despite everything we saw, is also a good reminder, teaching's a calling, and, you know, the, the work that's being done here is just so critical, and, you know, what we're doing has a connection to that, and I think it's something that we can carry forward.
Yes.
But just really impressed with what we saw today.
Anybody else? I do have an item, but I'll go last.
Any general open business?
Yeah.
So, yeah, I, I like, I noticed there's a pretty big difference between what we see from different schools when they present. I'd love to see some sort of standardized, like, expectations or bench, like, what is covered. For instance, last spring, if I recall, Phil Hall's presentation talked a lot about data, test scores, truancy, things like this, started some pretty meaty conversations. This presentation, while amazing, had zero data on those areas. So I'm not faulting either one, just, I'd like there to be some consistency across building presentations, so we as a board have a better idea of, I guess, what is sort of taking place in each area. So we can sort of, I guess, I feel like you're, you're putting schools in different categories in a way, and it, it kind of makes it hard for us to have informed conversations about what's working district-wide. We see a very narrow picture in each building that isn't really connected.
Well, then, yeah, we could have a district, we could have a district presentation, I just wanna-
No, I don't want a district presentation, I want-
No, I understand, but one of the things to understand is that because you have a small school, you don't have that kind of data that you would have at a larger school.
I don't understand that comment. You wouldn't have data on truancy, testing?
Well, she gave us truancy.
The numbers are too simple to calculate, because there are certain restrictions on the kind of data you can share, that it's not that identified.
Oh, I get it, yeah, yeah, I, I understand.
But there was, there was, there was some data in the presentation that I thought was, was really the tendency. And that's what I thought you guys had asked for. And that's what I thought you guys had asked for, and so that's what I thought, that's what the Board said to me, is make sure the principals have attendance data in their, in their presentations, and so then I went out and told all the principals to do that, if the Board has other directions of path or for the principals.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah, so, yeah. Cheryl or Jody know?
I would say that I, I think what the, the through line is with the principals is that I think I've seen them all start with the school's goals, and the, the school's kind of growth plan piece, so they all, I think, start with that and kind of go from there. So I think, I think Phil had one that was very, very much data, his goals for that year were very data-focused and oriented.
And he, and he explicitly, like, the year before, like, that was actually like his second, he was like saying, "Look, this is what we started last year with the data." I understand what you're saying, but like, for him, I think for that one in particular was like, he, he was explicitly, like, that was like his, like, "We don't have anything information, and now how, I look at this system that I've created."
I understand the idea that with small populations, individual data can be identifiable, and that's problematic.
Yeah.
I would, I guess, I, not seeing any testing data at all, when it is something that's brought up at the higher level and in other elementary schools.
What's what?
Still see it as potentially problematic. I wouldn't want to see disaggregated by ethnicity or disability or something like that, because that would be hugely problematic. But I guess I'd like to see more of that across all the presentations. Also, I'd love if we had a chance to maybe discuss the presentation more, like, there's this amazing presentation, people may have questions or thoughts or ideas or talking points, and then we just kind of move right on. I think that that might be something that we could build in, maybe 10 minutes of just open conversation around what we're seeing after presentations.
Just to follow up briefly, and I brought this up, I buy the Boston Globe every Sunday so I can read the sports section, but last week, there was, in the Boston Globe Magazine, an article, it was the education issue, and again, I didn't know it was in there, and it's titled "Something Rotten," and it talks about how New England, New England schools are lagging, whereas it used to be that Mississippi and...
Alabama.
Yeah, another southern school were considered sort of the dregs, and now they're outperforming the New England schools, and Vermont is included in that. If you get a chance to look at the article, I just thought, again, I'm not throwing darts at anybody, but it, it talks about exactly what you were talking about, David, in terms of test scores, and how most New England states are not growing, they're going down.
I mean, I'm not some, I'm not personally, don't feel the test scores illustrate a whole kid...
No, no, no.
But I just, I think it's...
But it's just...
Yeah, it's a concern.
It is a piece.
Yep.
That's all. And that's why I mentioned it.
And we have had, like, we definitely have had, there was a period of time where we, as a Board, probably two or maybe three years ago, we explicitly asked Brian to, like, "We want three or four meetings where you're gonna walk us through different test scores and like, what we're like, what is this like reference to, like, the, how much learned, like, how much is this, is this helpful for right now, how much is helpful in the past, and like that?" So if that, I mean, and that was like here, that was like a charts where it was like all the elementary schools and the high schools. So like, if that is a thing we're interested in as a Board, we can, we can ask for that to, like, you know, that's nothing wrong with asking for, saying, "Okay, this is something that we would like, one of these meetings," and not, maybe not even necessarily at one of the schools.
I did bring that up last meeting, and I noticed it was not on the minutes, which I did notice until after we'd voted on it, so, yeah.
So, please, two things. One is because those data conversations are petty and take a long time, and because of the length of board meetings, what we did in the past when we did have those, is we have what we call board educational sessions.
And that's true.
That could be about specific topics, like a bunch of things, or data, and so the Board would request an educational session about a specific thing, and that would take place from 6:00 to 7:00 before a board meeting. I just wanted to, to remind the Board that that was a structure we had used in the past, and we'd ever like to do that again. And the second thing is, I would just like to ask for clarification for our principals before you guys wrap for the night, like, after the dialogue, of what we would like to see in the remaining principal presentation.
Can I just speak for the, the presentation we had tonight gave us a sense of the culture of the place, and we're visiting, you know, and I think those are important things to take in. The data we can take in sitting back at the river, we could take in anywhere, and again, if, if we're going to get it for all the schools, I imagine it's best to do it in a comparative sense, so that we're getting it for all at the, at the same time, and use these for the engagement that we're able to have and to experience the culture of the...
It also depends on the time of the year.
Sure.
I mean, testing takes place in the fall, the spring, and again, I don't want to keep focusing on testing, because I truly believe it is, as they say, a snapshot, and that's all it is, is a snapshot. But, you know, that has an impact as well, in terms of what the principals may be able to provide in terms of data. I, I think, you know, one of the things that we've talked about in our retreat was about attendance and what things hinder attendance.
Yeah, and what barriers there are.
Yeah, and I, and I think that's, if anything the principals could generally focus on is that, which was gendered tonight.
Yeah.
We talked about that.
That was a response, because we had, we, at a board meeting, we were having this conversation, we asked, and Jody was like, "Well, we already have," because that was when we were talking about goals and vision, and it was like, "Well, they already have their goals."
Right.
But, so, but then she had to include it, so, you know, so...
Yeah.
We did get what we asked for in this particular sense, but, you know...
And I guess, in terms of data and achievement, you know, we have bookworms that has now been in for several years, and we, you know, we added math interventionists to try and help. So, you know, any data that we can get, whether it's, you know, formal testing or teacher evaluations that can tell us how well those are working, you know, from class to class, I think that's, you know, that's something that we should hear about, because, you know, the Board is...
And to get back to, to Jody's question, I think for me, it's more useful to see that collectively and not...
Yeah.
Not school by school.
And at the appropriate time when that data becomes available and can be made digestible. I mean, that data might not be available right now in any recent or current, currently relevant time panel.
So I think we'll check, you know, check the schedule, and, Jody, yeah, do educational, we can do it in the board meeting, just by, you know, if we don't have a presenter, then that could, you know...
Always, BJ and I are always happy to give you any data that you would like to do, whatever, whether it's an hour-long working with a session or a 10-minute presentation.
I think we can go longer than 10 minutes, but, yeah.
And that's just what I want to add, because I'm hearing different things from different board members, right? So I think we want to make sure that you're very clear, because I do know that the principals and Jody and BJ, what you give us as a direction, we will make sure you get.
Okay. Yeah, Dave?
You know, I, I have followed what Lenny articulated in that magazine, and, you know, when Lenny and I were teaching 20 years ago, Vermont was like always, you know, in the top five nationally consistently. And now, as Lenny pointed out, we're falling below the ones that were at the very bottom. And you know what? I don't think teachers have disintegrated in Vermont, and students have disintegrated in Vermont. There's something else. It's maybe teaching to the test, or whatever it is that's happening. I wish I could understand it, and maybe people that are in the know now, like you and the Assistant Superintendent...
And I think we've seen...
Have a feeling for why it's changed and why Vermont has slipped and other New England states, it's not...
I also want to point out, having raised children in the southern schools in Georgia, they have really come a long ways.
Yeah.
It's, it's not, you know, I mean, I don't know where we slipped, but I've watched schools in, in southern Georgia and such that have really turned systems around where they had illiteracy rates of graduates, you know, that have dropped to nil now. It's, they've come a long way, so there's...
I've seen it in South Carolina as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So they're more competitive, you think? That's what's different.
I don't know.
Figure some things out.
I don't know.
And are we talking about growth that we're slipping or proficiency?
I think it's, I'm not sure what they're testing, but it's proficiency, I think.
Yeah, Globe article. I was just curious, I am gonna look that up.
But I don't think teachers have suddenly gotten bad in Vermont, and students got bad in Vermont.
I agree.
I don't think that's happened. Maybe it's what you're saying, you know, they've boosted themselves in the southern states, and they're competitive now, and it's showing up, I don't know, but it'd be interesting...
The kids transferred from the river ahead of, ahead of the grade levels that they entered into from our schools in Georgia.
Yeah. Okay, well, that's part of Act 73, isn't it, to improve eligibility and...
Believe it when we see it.
So I think maybe, yeah, well, okay, so we will try and get some of that, some of this on agendas. We'll try and tease it out a little bit more as to how you guys can present.
Right, and when a reasonable time is to do it, like, if we want to see, like, if, like, when the fall testing, like, when you actually get the result, because, you know, the state standardized testing was absurd last year, right? Like, it took almost, like, almost a calendar year to get the results.
Well, and that's, that's the other thing, I mean, they, they give you the scores, but you can't release them, and, I mean...
And then they keep changing which...
They keep changing the tests, and...
If we look at the star scores this, this had a while...
Yeah.
That would be available even now, longitudinally.
Yeah.
Okay, so I, the only thing I have, which is, you know, we had conversation at our last board meeting from the public, who felt like there wasn't enough communication. So I talked to BJ, and I actually started a Facebook page, I haven't posted anything to it, I don't have Facebook personally, but it will be a board Facebook page. And BJ did give me some guidelines as to how we should post to that, and it's really only gonna be posting about upcoming meetings, maybe some information about what was covered at the board meetings. I would, I don't need board members to post, definitely don't respond to comments.
You can shut the comments off.
We can shut the comments off, and it's really just another way for families to have access to what happens at board meetings. We'll give it a try. Lenny's gonna be in charge, because I could tell you. No, I, I will be in charge, BJ will coach me, because, like I said, I don't have Facebook, I don't really want Facebook. But hopefully that'll be a way, because I think some of the younger families are on Facebook, and I know all the schools have Facebook pages, and Athletics has a Facebook page, and I thought...
You should start a TikTok.
With music and dancing.
Yeah, you can dance the minutes.
She can start trends, right? And challenges.
Oh, please.
Hold off on turning the comments off, because like, is a way people in the community can give feedback to us.
Yeah, we'll, we'll figure that out.
You know, navigate that, but I wouldn't initially set it up that way.
Right, and I think I would have a basic response that says, "Thank you for your interest in the school board, our next meeting is," and invite people to come and give public comment, because I think that's, we're trying to get people involved and not just to, you know, be passive about it, and...
But, but I mean, in fairness to lots of parents, it's hard to get here for this amount of time, even for 20 minutes at the start of a meeting.
Well, I also...
Like, I missed the meeting last night, and I'm on the Board, because I have kids and I'm super busy, so I think that...
No, I understand that. So what this could, what we could do is we could put links to our school board meetings.
Right, like, to the YouTube, because I, yeah, because, you know, when we had that public comment last week, or the last board meeting of being like, "We're, I'm an active parent and I don't see your messaging," and it's like, "I don't know where else to do it," so, you know, "Keep swinging the bat."
Yeah, keep swinging the bat, that's it. Okay, agenda building. We will have our student rep at our next meeting. Do we have anything that's on our schedule?
Yes, so I will share my goals...
Oh, that's right.
...with you.
Superintendent goals.
And we do have on there an M.R., a Mill River presentation, because he's on, they're on the agenda several times throughout the year.
For different departments?
For, yeah, for different departments, I'm not sure what that is, and I want to make sure that we, you know, set it up. Transportation, I think I need to keep on there every time, with any lock, I have hired someone. I also think Act 73, we should just keep on as a standing, and that was all I had.
Carol, do you want to do, because there was talk of an ad hoc committee to work with Cheryl on the evaluation, we talked about that.
Yeah, why don't we add that to when she does her goals, and then we'll ask, I don't know what's the best way to do that, do I just assign that, or do people volunteer, or... We're talking about an ad hoc committee, supervision committee. How do we do that?
It was volunteered.
Yeah, like, when we did the last one, it was a volunteer, I think technically you can appoint someone onto it. They also, I mean, strictly seeking, it doesn't even have to be board members that are on the ad hoc committee.
Right, and, and it does need to have a specific, because it's in the bylaws.
Yeah.
It does need to have a specific timeframe and a specific reporting out...
Yeah, a report, a specific task, like, a very specific thing.
It has to be pretty specific.
All right, so we will address that at the next board meeting.
Oh, no, that's not what I was doing. I think we should just add, at least to try to come up with a plan to discuss testing results on some kind of periodic basis.
Yeah. Right, because even if it's like, because we have that yearly chart for everything, you know, having data presented as part of that chart should be part of it.
Maybe we could share that, that chart for the year, and the whole Board can see what's coming.
I believe they have it, I don't think I have it.
Which one?
I'm positive.
That's the annual?
Yeah, the annual schedule.
It came as attachments to, like, three meetings ago?
Yeah, I can reshare that, and we can adjust that if you'd like.
I have it in my notebook, but I forgot my notebook.
Okay, so we'll, yeah, so we'll do an annual planning schedule through March.
Yeah, because I think that's part of the, one of the reasons why that list exists is because it's really easy for us to get lost in the specific topic and then miss things...
Yeah.
That we should be talking, that are bigger than maybe we say, "Oh, we should do that."
We focus on the urgent, forget the important.
Would November be a time to look at the first quarter of the year's over and look at attendance data? Not necessarily next meeting, but the meeting after? I'm just thinking, because I know the first quarter would be over by then.
When, once the, there's a date that...
Oh, yeah.
That's, um, average daily attendance.
It's October 1st.
Oh, okay. Because that, what, this is sent to the state.
Right, and that tells us our per pupil...
Yeah, right.
Right, membership.
So that's been done.
Yep, Dan does that, I think, or...
BJ does it now.
BJ does it now.
It's tech now.
It's all tech, all right. Okay, well, that's a lot. We'll send out a, an agenda, we can always adjust it.
Mm-hmm.
So if, and then if we have the schedule, maybe we'll send that out, and we'll review that at the next meeting. Anything else? Okay, we are adjourned.